One.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chairman of the Select Board, Chair, I'm sorry, Chair of the Select Board. And this is the meeting of the Select Board for February 21st, 2023. I'd like to start off with announcements and updates from the Select Board. If you don't mind, I'd like to start off by saying, Item 3H on our agenda tonight having to do with the TICOS Design Contract is going to be deferred next week. However, I would like to take the comments that people have related to that in the public comment section, session, so that we have their thoughts and concerns and you can think about them before a vote. So, any other comments or updates? Yeah?
Come on.
This is Ben Sroy.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much. I wanted to just acknowledge a couple of things. And one of them is that we have a wonderful local historian. And I know him personally. But I hope I don't embarrass him by mentioning him tonight. But Ken List has been President of the Brookline Historical Society for several years now. Beyond that, he, on his own, just has been a source of... Has been a source...
Back in the 1900s, you know, you're in the 1900s.
Okay. Ken has, Ken has been a source of just so many interesting articles about Brookline history and delvings into Brookline history. And one of them happens to have been just this week. And it happens to coincide with African American History Month. And it is all about Dr. Cornelius Garland. And I'll summarize as briefly as I can. Dr. Cornelius Garland was a pioneering black physician. I'm reading from what Ken wrote about him. And he was the founder of the first and only black hospital in Boston. He spent the last 24 years of his life in Brookline, where he lived on Cory Hill, from 1928 to 1952. His story, as it happens, was featured earlier this month in a piece on Cognisenti, which is on WBUR. And Ken's article goes on with a lot of additional interesting details. So I'm going to recommend to everyone that they check out. You can find it at BrooklineHistory.blogspot.com. It's called Muddy River Musings. As Ken calls it, "The meanderings through the thickets of Brookline's past." And boy, are there some interesting thickets and boy, is there some interesting past and some interesting history to this town. So again, hats off to Ken List. And also, recommend to everyone that they delve into the history of Dr. Cornelius Garland in Brookline and, and everything else that is there to find on the, on the Muddy River Musings that Ken himself has been researching since 2009. So, thank you very much for that time to, to have that, to make that comment.
Thank you. Very interesting. Any other announcements or updates? Okay, public comment.
Yes, we, we have an intro to public comment, which I'm going to give you right now. And it starts this way. It's, it, "Public comment: It's an opportunity to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Few rules to share: Each person speaking tonight limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time. You may, if you like. Please refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues. Members of the public sometimes raise questions. We may be able to provide a quick answer. More likely, we'll work with staff to get a more thorough answer, respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. And do please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And Devin, who's first on our list?
The first person signed up for public comment is Neil Gordon. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Devin. Thank you for the time tonight. I'm Neil Gordon, Precinct One Town Meeting Member, Member of the Advisory Committee and its Public Safety Subcommittee. I speak on a point I made last week. The lack of proposed override funding for the equitable pay of town employees. Last year, after a hard fight, our teachers settled on a raise that was and remains beyond the school's ability to pay. In their FY23 budget, the school's structural deficit was funded through a one-time grant. For FY24, adequate funding, what our teachers fairly bargained for, is in the town administrator's proposed override. Where in the proposed override are we providing for fair and equitable pay for our townsite employees, police officers, firefighters, and others? Pay that's not artificially constrained, as the teachers were not constrained, by the limits of Prop 2.5. The town administrator told us he omitted funding to the override because of contracts currently in bargaining. But how long until he uses the same lack of funds as a bargaining tool for why the town can't afford to pay more? In a former corporate life, I was CFO of a company with union employees, teamsters, and steelworkers. With all due respect to our local union reps, negotiating with teamsters and steelworkers was no bargaining table layout. But we reached agreements that were fair to both the workers and our corporate stakeholders. We did so without artificial constraints. The town county should do the same by asking the voters not to give town employees raises. I leave that to the bargaining process. But ask the voters to give that process the flexibility to be fair and equitable. Let the process determine salary and benefits, not the convenient to hide behind Prop 2.5 cap. That's the process our teachers got. Let's give our townside employees the same. Much of the townside, as we all know, has been essentially level-funded for years in order, in order to adequately fund our schools. I'm not arguing less for the schools. I'm simply arguing for townside equity, equity of process, and not necessarily of outcome. For that, we need override relief, subject to bargaining, to fairly compensate our town employees, not only in FY24, but in FY25, 26, and beyond. We can still negotiate, but let's do it without hiding behind a morale-destroying Prop 2.5 barrier. Low pay, among other forms of disrespect, are often noted by former Brookline police officers who've opted to leave here for other departments.
You have 30 seconds.
Ask the voters, thank you. Ask the voters for override relief. Trust the voters to do the right thing and give town government the power to do the right thing as well. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Linda Pelkey. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Select Board. My name is Linda Olson Pelkey. I'm a Town Meeting Member for Precinct 17, Advisory Committee Member and Chair of the Planning Process Study Committee. I'd like to comment on the Optico's Form-Based Zoning Consultant Contract on your agenda for tonight. I'm troubled by the way this proposal and process has been handled. It represents top-down planning in the very worst possible way and denies the community its role in creating a vision for Brookline's future. Without a broader community vision, we cannot possibly realize anything truly transformational that could advance our multiple community goals in a mutually beneficial way. I believe the work of transforming our zoning to a form-based code would be much more successful, efficient, and relevant as part of our comprehensive planning process, which is set to begin this summer. As for the contract before you tonight, it's my belief that it should reflect the potential for altering the scope in response to community feedback, changes to the guidelines, and meeting shifting goals that may arise, such as protecting our existing businesses. The public has been kept in the dark about many of the details. The study and analysis that is the foundation for this request has not been released to the public. The map that is part of this contract, that shows a large portion of Precinct 7 being rezoned as part of this effort, was just released today. Several Town Meeting Members, myself included, have reached out to the business community only to learn they were not consulted in the creation or adoption of this proposal. The details of the guidelines and compliance model to implement the MBTA Community Act are not accessible to the public, with formulas hidden and unnecessarily complex. All of this points to a lack of transparency and public engagement that at a minimum should mean that the Select Board should not vote tonight on this contract in order to give even a minimum opportunity for those directly impacted to comment. There is no community consensus around future growth and development in Brookline. We are working on getting there through the planning process. We need to understand our potential and limitations, our priorities and capacities, so we can be informed and inspired to move forward together. Leapfrogging that effort at building a shared consensus is not a recipe for success at Town Meeting or elsewhere. Please postpone the vote on this contract to allow time for further refinement and to engage with those who have just learned they will be greatly impacted by this proposal. Thank you.
The next person.
Let me just say for other people seeking to make public comments that we have put off the contact vote until next week. Although I do want to hear from those who have signed up to speak about it. But we will be voting on it next week.
The next person signed up for public comment is David Gladstone. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Devin. David Gladstone, Precinct 16, longtime resident, President of the Brookline Chamber of Commerce. The business community understands that the MBTCA Compliance Plan has significant implications. A state rep Tommy Vitillo was quoted as saying, "This conversation relates to the largest change in land use planning within Brookline in decades." The business community is concerned about the impact to street-level commercial space. We're also concerned about the loss of potential parking within the proposed structures and the consideration that all parking is surface parking. It could create limited availability of parking at a time when no study has been undertaken to understand the parking needs of both Coolidge Corner and surrounding areas. We strongly urge our Select Board, our State Senator, our State Representatives to lobby DHCD and the executive branch of Massachusetts to advocate for an amendment or exception to the guidelines. We encourage our town administration also to work with other like municipalities to seek potential changes, including potential financial incentives. We do support the hiring of a consultant group, keeping these points I've just mentioned previously at the forefront of planning. We can't in good conscience leave this to chance. Thank you and have a great evening.
Can I just jump in briefly there to say that, Dave, Mr. Gladstone, you should be aware that we are, we are making that effort currently. And we look forward to providing more information to the broader community. Those efforts are ongoing in my office. Those efforts are ongoing with our state representatives' offices. Those efforts are ongoing here and with multiple different organizations. So we're actually, we're very excited because there's a real consensus around how to prioritize Brookline's needs vis a vis amendments or potential exceptions that may need to be made here and reaching out on multiple levels on this front. So it's, it's an exciting time because we're really, we're, we're moving, I think, with, with a great deal of purpose and collaboration with the state in the hopes of getting to the right outcome here, reflecting all the issues that you brought up. So we're very excited to do that. And just so folks understand, the re, one of the reasons we've pulled this contract in addition to giving folks time to review it is to ensure that the language that the Select Board drafted and put out, I believe, last week in their memorandum regarding what their priorities are for planning and undertaking this are reflected in the contract so that the consultant knows what the Select Board's objectives are in this. And as Ms. Pelkey said, ensuring that there's the reflection of the Select Board's priorities in the contractual language itself. So we're, we're, we hear the community on this and we're moving on it.
Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator.
The next person signed up for public comment is Marty Rosenthal. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much, Marty Rosenthal, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, formerly on the Select Board, and a lifelong Precinct 9 resident. I'm still opposing the Harvard Street Project and tonight's contract or next week's contract. I spoke two weeks ago calling this a seismic shift for Brookline, especially 7 precincts, and seeking in vain answers to some questions that I believe will doom this for Town Meeting. Number one was, why not other areas like Boylston, Washington, and Beacon Street? Number two, why not, if unavoidable, instead fund the offensive BHA penalty and then try for some consensus in the meantime? Number three, what about the projected numbers like new residents and cars, truly affordable units, the three schools populations, revenues and costs, and dozens of treasured local businesses? On that last point, I recently was in Anna's Taqueria and Aborn Hardware and it hit me. Aside from some forest-viewing Town Meeting Members, it's now been shockingly ignored by town leadership, including EDAB and the Planning Board, and by our so-called experts. This is now my main concern. Charlie Homer, for whom I have huge respect, says, "Concerning JFK area stores, Maria Morelli noted that those lots are quite shallow, lacking sufficient depth to convert to four-story mixed-use buildings. I'm sorry, but that generality is inadequate. Many treasured but at-risk business owners, their patrons, and the community all need to know exactly which businesses are and are not at risk. I'm sorry, but what they call 'human beings' will be seriously impacted by this and the entire feel of North Brookline. Some averge deferring to the planning staff answers. Yes, they have huge expertise and professionalism, but that's irrelevant to the crucial 800-pound gorilla, the human and community issues and values." May I have my one slide, please? Your January 31st memo shows four Harvard Street buildings, Walton Place to Vernon Street, calling it a coherent, oops, lost my speech here. All right, I can go to the handwritten copy. All, where was I? Vernon Street, calling it a coherent streetscape that we want MBTA Community Act zoning to maintain. And then I've added my notes for what's immediately beyond there. As for coherent, not only are these buildings outliers, but there's also Emerson's saying, "A foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds." I've called form-based zoning a focus on a subjective aesthetics of the buildings, that is, the trees, but a technocratic siren-song soundbite that ignores the community, the forest.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. That evokes two of my Vietnam travesty faves. Number one, we had to destroy the town to save it. And then, relative to brilliant technocrats, what Sam Rayburn said when LBJ touted JFK's Harvard grad Vietnam advisors brilliance. Sam Rayburn said, "Yeah, but I'd feel better if one of them had once run for sheriff. This runaway train should be slowed down, please." Thank you.
May I answer Mr. Rosenthal's three questions? Have other areas been considered? Yes. Over the last two years, those areas have been considered and presentations have been made by both the Select Board and the four major housing-related panels in and around the community. However, it is important that the community understand, the additional, additional members of the community beyond that, understand how the process that has been gone through over the past two years to develop this and consider the alternatives. And so, the Planning Department has been asked by the Select Board to be more active in the community, to go out and explain that process and have people understand that the areas that were raised have been considered and, for various reasons, have been, it has been decided with, again, community input and discussion that this Harvard Street proposal, which is still subject to community oversight, review, and analysis over the course of the next several months before it goes before Town Meeting for a final up or down vote, which will require the community's buy-in or else it will fail. So yes, other ideas have been considered. We need to do a better job of explaining how that process went and we will do that better job. Two, can we spend, can we just eat the money? Spend $225,000 from our budget to fund BHA? Assuming that we could do that and we could cut other services to do that, even if an override passes, we would still be likely, per the comments made in other organizations, we'd be, including by the Attorney General last week. There are threats out there to sue communities that don't comply. We obviously would vigorously dispute those and fight them. But the reality of the situation is, the language of the statute itself is mandatory, not permissive. On the projected numbers front, again, we can do good, we can be better at messaging this, but the development and the potential for development is not the destiny of development, nor do 4,000 people just spring up overnight from additional development. Development takes place over time. And what form-based zoning in this process does is provide a sustainable development process so that we are not in a space where all of a sudden, a glut of units goes up overnight, a four-story cap and, and means of development that is of a peace with the other surrounding residential structures ensures that that sudden strain on town resources is avoided in a way that other, less elegant zoning, upzoning proposals in other communities have failed to account for. We really want to take those issues into account. So I thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, for your questions. I want to make sure that we continue answering those and others and do a better job of speaking to the community going forward. So, thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Deborah Brown. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Brown, Brookline resident. We're writing to ask you to discuss with us the town's potential override and to explain some of the proposed American Rescue Plan Act funding recommendations. The context for this ask is twofold. You know, the ARPA emergency and services, services associated with it, and the increase in needs from our neighbors. Why don't most of our spending priorities reflect some of the concerns raised by residents like access to mental health services, public safety changes, salary administration and succession planning, green infrastructure, small business development, and improved diversity and inclusion program? We are so concerned about many of the town's ARPA recommendations in that we believe that some of the town-proposed projects should not be funded pending additional discussion and a clear explanation as how they support Congress's intent in passing ARPA. The ARPA funds could be, should be, Brookline's Anti-Poverty and Climate Marshall Plan. Have you created a list of projects that are the highest best use of the funds, given their intended purpose? We worry that both the override and the ARPA allocations fail to adequately serve Brookline's residents and especially its disadvantaged residents. Given that the town had an equity tool to evaluate ARPA proposals, what happened? We do not want a lose-lose battle between disadvantaged organization when the pot is of this size. How can you justify spending millions on town vehicles, yet so little on other essential services like food access, homelessness prevention, mental health services, job training, and even internet access? We understand that you believe that you can use these funds to make capital purchases, but we would assert that your interpretations differ substantially from ours. Recipients, and I can go into that, but I'll avoid it. To facilitate an efficient conversation, we produce an alternate list of priorities to those presently under discussion by the town. And that's the town's half of the money. We expect that you would have to reprioritize, reprioritize some of your earlier recommendations to accommodate these. We are requesting specifically that you create a Department of Housing Stabilization and that it be on par with the Health Department, DPW, Recreation, and other town departments. Again, we assert that the funds, you know, are actually fungible and could come from either ARPA or the override. Our funding requests would total approximately $5.36 million. We are requesting nothing that falls beyond the town's scope of a reasonable request for ARPA and override funds.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Our ask is both realistic and consistent with what other similarly... other similarly sized and situated communities have done. If we're a loving community, then the programs that we are proposing should fall well within reason for Brookline. We trust that Brookline will do right by its residents, but especially its most vulnerable residents. We are well aware that decisions are being made, so a meeting as soon as possible is critical. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Brookline Residents for Fiscal Responsibility. Thank you.
I want to make the board aware of a comment in the Q and A. It reads, why did the select board put in a proposal for ARPA round two funding for $5 million? And what did the select board mean when they said in their project summary, increasing public sector capacity in green ways, increasing public sector capacity means? How does this assist low-income BIPOC communities with negative impacts from COVID? At this time, there are 20 virtual attendees and three in person? Bonnie Bastian is being promoted to a panelist. Hi, everybody. Go ahead.
Thank you, Devin. Bonnie Bastian, town meeting member, precinct five. Thank you all for allowing me to speak for a very brief moment. First, I want to voice again my gratitude for the planning department's work that they have and will be doing on the MBTAC issues. I'm very grateful and I appreciate the work and I hope to, I hope that we are able to address the portions of that act that are not ideal. Regarding the override presentation last week, as well as the recent ARPA committee meeting, I want to support all that Deborah just said. I feel that neither the town's proposals to ARPA or the override proposal has taken much of the disparity of the town's disparity report into consideration. ARPA should be Brookline's opportunity to address the needs of our most vulnerable. And we understand that there is significant political pressure around both of these opportunities for funding. So we hope that we can have a conversation with you all about these, these concerns because this is ARPA is a once, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and this override should also cover some of those bases, some equity bases, more than it does now. Thank you so much for your time, and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
At this time, there are 21 virtual attendees and three in person. No one has used the hand raise feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, 3A, is related to executive board executive, I'm sorry, select boards, executive session meeting minutes from January 3, or January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. And we have a list in the packet of those minutes that have been withheld.
You have to read them.
And I'm about to read them. January 4, 2022, January 11, January 18.
Both parts.
Pardon me?
So like date withhold.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Release.
Okay. I was gonna read all the withholdings and then go on. Okay, January 4, withheld. January 11, withheld. January 18, withheld. January 25th, withheld page two, but release page one. January, February 1, 2022, withhold. February 8, withhold. March 1, withhold. March 15, release. March 22, withhold. April 5, withhold page two, release page one. April 26, withhold. May 17, withhold page one, release page two. May 27, withhold. July 26, withhold. August 9, withhold page two, release page one. August 16, withhold. August 23, withhold pages three and four, release pages one and two. September 13, withhold pages one, two, and three, release page four. September 28, withhold page two, release page one. October 14, withhold. November 1, withhold. November 17, release. November 29, release. And December 20, release. All those are calendar year 2022. So do I hear, we don't need to vote? Okay, thank you. So that's just information as to what we've done with respect to the executive session minutes. And now a question of approving the following select board regular minutes. January 31, 2023, February 7, 2023, and February 14, 2023. Anyone have a problem with voting on all of them, or actually would like to withhold February 14 since I haven't had a chance to review that? Okay. How about January 31 and February 7? No problems with that?
No problem.
Okay, let's go forward. I move approval of the minutes of the select board for January 31, 2023, and February 7, 2023. All in favor? Let's see, who's first? Mr. Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Ms. Ashkenazi.
Aye.
Mr. Sandman.
Aye.
And Mr. Green, also aye. We had a discussion about that earlier. Okay, next, question of approving the following. I'm sorry, we have our miscellaneous agenda. And I'm going to read all of the items that we're going to vote in an omnibus fashion. 3C, question of approving the following authorization to hire requests for the vacant position within the police department, meaning school traffic supervisor, parking control. Item 3D, question of approving authorization to hire for the following vacant position within the building department, an energy management system specialist. Item 3E, question of accepting two gifts totaling $20,500 to support the replacement of the ornamental gates at Hall's Pond Sanctuary. Item 3F, question of approving a budget transfer request from the building department for a total amount of $18,000, $6,000 of that amount from code enforcement personnel to code enforcement supplies. $12,000 of that amount from code enforcement, code enforcement personnel to education, training, and conferences. Item 3G, question of approving extra work order number one related to the woodland road improvements and the amount of $111,700 in disposing of leaves and related work in the amount of $45,000 with the Ambrosia Inc. 3G, as I said earlier, is being deferred. And 3I, question of authorizing the use of American Rescue, Rescue Plan Act funds for wage expenditures in an amount not to exceed $6 million as recommended by the town administrator. I'd like to vote on all except for 3I, and I think the town administrator is going to speak to 3I in a little more detail. So all in favor of items 3C through 3G, all in favor, please say aye. Mr. Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Ms. Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Mr. Sandman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, with respect to item 3I.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Green, just to inform the broader public about what this is. This is, this is the premium pay amount. This allows us to conduct the premium pay work that we have, we've discussed. This is not the town's round two ARPA proposal, which remains under consideration under the ARPA committee. And I do just want to highlight, I know we've talked in the past, but you know, in terms of some of the broader questions about, you know, I, I don't want to get into a discussion of the, the priorities. Obviously, that's, that's a, the priorities are a community discussion, but I just want to make sure people are aware of the eligibility categories in ARPA. There are seven eligible expenditure categories. We often think of four because we can, we kind of condense them. But just so everyone's aware, it's public health, which is really relates to COVID and the impacts thereof on health, including mental health and substance use. The negative economic impacts, that's where we talk about aid to disproportionately impacted and impacted populations, vulnerable populations. Public health and negative economic impact, there's a subset of that called public sector capacity, which is primarily one of the things that the town has been asking for. There's premium pay, which is a separate category, which is what's being voted on today. There is infrastructure, which is divided into two subcategories, water and sewer, and then broadband. There is revenue replacement, which is that catch-all subset of money that's much more, we have, we have much less of, but can be set to broader uses. And finally, you can spend some, but very little of your overall grant for administrative purposes. So those are the seven categories of eligible ARPA expenses. This vote is for that fourth major category, premium pay. And you know, to make sure that we have the money necessary to fund the premium pay as programmed by the town. So thanks to the select board for the opportunity to explain that.
Thank you. So all in favor of item 3I, with respect to the American Rescue Plan Act funds for wage expenditures, please say aye. Mr. Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Ms. Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Mr. Sandman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, boards and commissions interviews. We have a interviewee for the building commission, Brooke Duskin. So could you spend a couple of minutes just introducing yourself and why you want to be on the building commission? And your skill set to do that?
Absolutely. Good evening, board and larger community. Thank everybody for your time. My name is Brooke Duskin. I'm a Brookline resident and applicant for the vacant position on the building commission. I have nine years of work experience in the engineering, real estate, construction industry, six of which were as a building envelope engineer at a local firm, working on both existing buildings and architectural review of new buildings as well. Some of that work did involve public projects, so I am familiar with the filed subbid process and how public projects work. I transitioned a little under three years ago to the construction and real estate side of the industry. I currently work at a real estate development firm that also has a general contracting arm. I've worked as a construction project manager for ground-up construction projects for the general contracting arm, and I'm now more focused on real estate development projects and acting as an owner's rep, so really overseeing the design process all the way through the construction process. Very similar process to what I would be assisting with as a member of the building commission. I've been living with my husband in Brookline for almost four years now and have not previously been very involved in the community, but I'm looking for an opportunity to get more involved, to really connect with the larger community, and this seemed like a great fit based on my background and an opportunity for me to contribute my professional knowledge to help benefit the town. So I'm excited about the opportunity and have, happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I've got a few. First, first, thank you very much. And but before you leave here, I'm going to ask Heather's standard question, but I'm going to, I'm going to start with my own question. Oh, are you gonna ask?
No, no.
No, I will, as long as somebody asks me, a nod, a nod to Heather. First, I heart engineers, so I'm a STEM person myself, so. I'm interested to know what you think about the affordable housing situation in Brookline.
So I think it is a very complicated issue. I think having currently worked at a private development firm, I know that there are some economic realities that play into the situation that make it challenging for developers to necessarily address all of the community number, members' needs with a specific project, but I know that those needs are important and it's really, I think, important to find a balance between meeting those goals and also just getting things built. I think sometimes perfection is, gets in the way of progress, and I think these, this is where town and private partnerships can really come in handy and help advance the situation by having, you know, Brookline really happy for the priorities for the town and finding, I think, you know, private developers who can come, you know, partner in a way that is, you know, beneficial for all parties and really helps, you know, give the town the additional affordable housing that we need.
I have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Sure.
And do you do any affordable housing in the current position that you have?
Position, we do a wide variety of asset classes. We do have a project in Brighton right now that is a percentage affordable, and we did recently try to get a project permitted in Jamaica Plain where we were targeting. It was going to be actually 26% affordable based on the recent density requirements there, but we ran into some issues with trying to get a six-story building built was kind of what was needed to make the project make sense with that level of affordables, and there was some pushback given the consistency with the rest of the neighborhood and heights and story regulations there.
Sounds just like Brooklyn. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Sandman.
So I, 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 thanks for explaining your background, which is certainly appropriate for this, this commission. Have you been, have you watched or been to any of the commission's meetings?
Yes, I attended last week's meeting, and it was a lot to take in. It was very interesting to be a part of, but having it having been my first meeting that I attended, I think it was about a three-hour meeting going into like the nitty-gritty of all the ongoing projects. I am definitely not an expert on the projects going on at this point by any means, but it was really amazing to see the attention to detail that the commission plays, pays and how thorough those meetings really are and what's involved.
Right, and the three hours is not unusual.
I understand that they gave me that, you know, word of warning as well, and I, they actually asked after it was over and I got my chance to speak with the members, they asked if I'm still interested in joining, and I definitely still am, and I, I think they're doing a lot of exciting work.
And then just a somewhat unrelated point, Ken Lewis has put together a really interesting model on the Economic Development Advisory Board, put together a really interesting model of the impact on revenue and cost to the town of development. And it's something that you might find very interesting, even in your, in your professional role. And certainly you would as a building commission member, and so you might want to get in touch with him and, and ask him about that.
Definitely. I appreciate the recommendation.
Okay.
Van Scoyac?
Yes, thank you very much. I would urge those listening in on this discussion tonight to check out the building commission page on the town's website and in particular, read the mission of the building commission. I, I, I think that, I wouldn't blame, you know, some people if they were a little bit confused as to whether the building commission actually is involved in economic development in Brookline. The mission of the building commission is to participate in the selection of design consultants, reviews, and approved plans and specifications, receives proposals, awards, contracts, and oversees the town's, the town's building program. So, you know, at a building commission meeting, you're likely to see a review of the latest from the Driscoll School Construction Project. You're likely to see reviews of change orders within construction projects that are town construction projects. And it is a very, very important commission because it does require expertise in every single member, and it requires a significant contribution of time. And from conversations with one of the members as recently as this week, I do know that they have been very anxious to fill uh as recently as this week, um I do know that they have been very anxious to fill this position and that, in fact, they are very excited that they found Brooke or that Brooke found them. I I assuming, I assume maybe Brooke, you you found them, um and that um they are looking forward to Brooke joining the commission soon. So I just want to say thank you so much for um seeking us out and thank you for volunteering your time and um looking forward to saying aye to your appointment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. So uh we will vote on appointments to the building commission at a later uh meeting.
Okay.
But we appreciate your appearance before us. I'm sorry.
First question. How did you hear about this job opening?
Fine patch article.
Thank you.
I was thinking of another call at Mike's. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um next, Carlton Street Footbridge update. Uh speakers, Bill Smith and Rod Rob King, uh they here?
Rob is joining us remotely.
Okay. Carlton Street Footbridge goes back many decades.
I was by there just the other day. Um there was people working in the evening, in fact, one of the evenings that people were working. Uh and it's coming along.
Yeah.
You can see real progress with the construction of the ramps.
Good, good.
Good evening to the board uh through the chair. My name is Rob King, Director of Engineering and Transportation for the town. Uh this evening, our team is representing our partners at Mast DOT at the Bridge, the MBTA. Uh we're sharing that there is planned upcoming night work uh to support the continued work associated with the Carlton Street Footbridge. Work is anticipated to take between two AM and five AM uh to install mesh panels and to remove some existing wood shielding as so as part of the project. Uh the engineering transportation team will be delivering notices to the community, updating them on this planned work. And obviously, uh we we thank our partners at those organizations, and we're committed to continue to updates to this board if and when needed prior to close out of this project.
Question? Any questions?
How many?
Uh uh thanks, that's um so I I don't know if you've been following it at all, but uh we're sort of the night work raises raises our our gets our attention around here uh because of Hancock Village, but I realize knowing the site that this is a very different circumstance and a very different scope of work. Um but is is the work taking place on the Brooklines, on on the on the uh west side of the tracks, that is, on the where the hot where the neighborhood is, or is it taking place on the park side of the tracks on the east side?
I appreciate that question through the chair. Uh the work is actually taking place above the rail right of way. Um so split split those two locations in half. And uh the equipment, the personnel, the machinery that's going to be used, we don't actually anticipate that it would trigger our noise bylaw requirements. But again, um the team and I have have committed to keeping the board up to date on any work that might be taking place outside of regular construction hours, and so we want to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh thank you, Robert. Um so it says weeks three, two twenty-seven and three, six twenty-three. Can you give us an idea if that's every night of those weeks or a few nights of those weeks? Because if we're all week, I would be very unhappy as a resident.
Love it. Uh great question. So based on the conversations that we've had with Mast DOT and the contractor, we anticipate this to be two or three nights of work. But the exact time that that takes place is still being worked out with the MBTA. We're not actually going to know that information until tomorrow during our bi-weekly construction meeting. So we wanted to to cover ourselves and the team by bringing this to the board. But no, to specifically answer your question, this will be uh two or three nights of work. And again, we don't anticipate it to be disruptive to the community.
Two or three nights total.
Total, that's correct.
Great, thank you. Important clarification.
Yeah. So so when are we going to be finished with the Carlton Street Footbridge?
Guys, I know at some point in time I want to be done and and celebrate with this board uh on its opening, but we are still targeting a spring twenty twenty-three completion. Um and again, uh we're, you know, we're dealing with a lot of the same problems that the construction world is dealing with, but uh our partners at the MBTA, Mast DOT and and at the Bridge have been fantastic, and we're doing everything we can to to eliminate those challenges. So we're still looking at a a spring twenty twenty-three date.
Great, right. It's been a long time, many controversies, but hopefully we'll finally be able to walk across the bridge.
I didn't realize we were actually ever contemplating getting it finished.
Some people didn't want it.
I know. Yes, indeed.
Okay, um any other questions from the board?
No. Oh, great.
Thank you.
I'm great.
Okay, next, uh home rule petition presentation. We are honored by the presence of our state representative, uh Mr. Vitolo, who's going to lead this discussion.
Good evening, uh Tommy Vitolo, Brookline State Rep from the fifteenth Norfolk District. And uh although only folks in North Brookline are allowed to vote for me, I will continue to represent everyone in Brookline uh each and every day in the State House. Uh and also, I just want to take a moment and say uh congrats on progress on the Carlton Street Footbridge, uh an item that I worked on beginning fifteen years ago. And uh sure enough, we're still working at it, uh but but the progress is real, and I'm grateful. Uh on February sixth, I sent a letter to you all uh outlining uh all of the home rule petitions that Brookline uh sent along over the past several years, as well as the home rule petitions that were passed as recently as November twenty twenty-two. As there are so many, there are quite a few different outcomes for the different items, and I wanted to call all of them to your attention. Of course, as you know, it is your privilege as the select board to decide which home rule petitions to send along to the legislature. The town meeting has the authority to pass them, but it is only the select board who has the authority to submit them. And to be clear, that means you also have the authority to not submit them. That is your prerogative as our executive board elected leaders. Uh to that end, uh I suspect that you will be submitting uh quite a few back this session. Of course, as you may know, there is no deadline for submitting home rule petitions. They aren't held up by rules committees in the same way. And so as soon as you send them along, uh my colleague in the Senate, Senator Cindy Cream, and I will divvy them up uh as strategically as we can and submit them either as a House bill or a Senate bill. Of course, all of them would need to pass both houses and be signed by the governor uh to become law. And so that's simply a matter of us balancing the work and playing to our strengths and the strengths of our associated bodies. Uh I had not intended on walking through all of them with you. The eight pages of the letter does just that. Uh instead, I would be happy to answer questions or provide any guidance that I can on any of the home rules uh in the list. I will also add that of the three that were passed in November and sent along uh by your body recently, uh I have filed one, Cindy Cream. The Senator will file the other two, uh the one that I will file, which relates to zoning, green zoning, if you will. Uh I filed today. Uh if Senator Cream's office hasn't filed them uh today, I'm sure they will do so in the next several days.
Okay. Any discussion?
Um can we just quickly list which home rule petitions? I mean, I I've looked at them, but and I think it's page sixty-four in the packet.
Yep.
To know every packet, um but it might be helpful, I think, if we just talk. I mean, there are a few that are important for me, though I don't know how you want to handle this.
Yeah, I don't, whatever way is best for you, but one question I would like to ask before we we get into this is um, you know, looking at the list here strategically, uh do we need to prioritize and schedule, you know, when we file uh in any particular way so that we don't um either overwhelm the legislature or you, or so that we don't um uh miss opportunities to get, you know, really key ones passed? So talk to me about
Sure.
that that process.
So what I would say is this, uh file the ones you want to become law, don't file the ones uh that need not become law as a home rule. Uh in terms of order and priority, uh you know, we're going to work through six thousand bills over the next eighteen months. Uh and so whether or not Brookline files ten or twelve additional, uh I'm sure that everyone from the Clerk of the House and Senate uh to the members will be able to manage it. On the other hand, uh everyone involved only has the same number of hours a year as you do, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty of them. And so the more you ask, the less time is available for each of the individual items, to which I say prioritization is reasonable, but in terms of sending them to my office, don't feel like uh you should send them in a particular order or only some now and some later. Uh as you are prepared to send them in, uh we will immediately turn around and file them and get that process started.
Um.
Yes.
Bernard, unless you have any objections or any of the other select board members, I just would like to quickly read the petitions eligible for us to file, eligible for refile, and the ones that we would have to that have expired. For the ones that were expired, we have to refile, we have to re-present warrant articles again, is that correct?
Correct. So.
Anybody have any objections? I'll be quick.
You want to read?
To be, to be clear, uh when a when a warrant article is passed and submitted to the legislature, we submit it as a home rule petition as a a House docket or a Senate docket. And if it passes in that session or the subsequent session, everything's fine. Every two years, the select board would have to resend. But if a home rule petition has not passed in that session or the subsequent session, uh it is against, I don't remember what House rule it is, uh Joint Rule seven C or something. Uh we can't file it again until the legislative body, the city council or the town meeting passes it again.
Mike, I'll read that. Um I okay, so I'm going to read these. I respectfully request not to be interrupted. Home rule petitions, yes, that is shade. Home rule petitions eligible for file in the hundred ninety-third session. The following home rule positions passed town meeting and are eligible to be filed. An act authorizing the establishment of a betterment loan program for the funding of electrification initiatives in the town of Brookline. An act authorizing the town of Brookline to amend its community choice aggregation plan and an act authorizing the town of Brookline to adopt green zoning bylaws and regulations. Home rule petitions eligible for refile in the hundred ninety-third session. An act authorizing local voting rights for permanent legal residents residing in Brookline. An act authorizing the town of Brookline to hold hybrid town meetings. An act amending section five of chapter two seventy of the Acts of nineteen eighty-five as amended to authorize delegation by general bylaw of all select board licensing authority. An a act exempting the town of Brookline from in-person quorums. An act authorizing the expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars from the town of Brookline Marijuana Mitigation Stabilization Fund for purpose of advancing racial equity in the town of Brookline. I feel like there's a V missing there. And very quickly, the expired home rule petitions, because one of these is the one that I care about, which is an act authorizing the town of Brookline to impose a real estate transfer fee. An act authorizing citizens in the town of Brookline who have reached the age of sixteen years or older to register and vote in a municipal election within the town. An act authorizing the town of Brookline to offer a senior discount program for water and sewer rates. That's it.
Thank you for for that reading.
What?
Welcome.
What select board man-
Theater.
What select board member Ashkenazi did not read were the list of successful.
No, because we don't need to discuss those. So I was just reading the ones that we were discussing.
Representative Vitolo, you can read and.
I'd be happy to talk about our successes.
Successes that you had.
Uh an act relative to bidding requirements for a certain affordable housing project in the town of Brookline passed as a home rule, and as you know, that will allow the Colonel Floyd Brookline Housing Authority project to proceed uh and proceed in an all-electric manner. An act authorizing the town of Brookline to establish a means-tested senior property tax exemption passed as a home rule. Uh my office has begun working with the town on sorting out exactly how uh folks who are eligible to apply will learn of that and the process by which they do so. The short answer is uh if you are a low-income senior and you're paying property tax, you should take a look. Um an act authorizing the town of Brooklyn to adopt and enforce local regulations restricting new fossil fuel infrastructure and certain instruction, of course, was the famous uh warrant article twenty-one, and we were able to move forward on that via general legislation, and in fact, the town did so in January. And finally, uh I think there's one more, but I've got all of my uh pages turned around, so we'll take a break there.
And that.
Speed regulations. Ah yes, the speed regulations. Uh that's an example where the home rule did not pass, but we did change state law. The state law change doesn't do exactly what the home rule asks, but it does something substantially similar to which uh this is a nice example of a place where the select board might choose to not resubmit the home rule and instead try to take advantage of the new law that was passed uh and and solve the problem of excessive speed limits using the new law rather than ask the legislature to pass a law specific to Brookline.
Thank you.
Um.
So what why don't we, what I'd like to do, well.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Now, what I'd like to do is to vote as to whether we want to refile or file the uh three items that are eligible for filing in the uh hundred ninety-third session.
The the three items that are eligible have been sent in and are or will be filed. The question at hand is the ones that are eligible to be refiled.
Okay.
Got five there.
Okay.
There's one that's very, very important for me.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, is that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what did you say, John? I'm sorry.
Can we have some more discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Rushing to a vote. Um, thank you very much, Representative Vitolo. Uh it's fun, as you were reciting the history of of this uh and offering some explanation, um it occurred to me, maybe the most important thing you said is to highlight for people that there are six thousand bills filed in the legislature in a given session, and um I I don't think people think about that very much, and maybe they should think about it a little bit more. Um that that kind of tells you why it's not automatic that, you know, when a home rule petition gets filed, that it gets adopted. Um and that applies to um uh all of the petitions that are not necessarily home rule petitions. Um and I I would also just bring up, because I think it's relevant, um town meeting uh we've experienced in Brookline, um it can be very difficult. Um if there's an art, if there's a warrant for a town meeting and it's got uh forty items on it or, you know, more than forty items on it. Um sorting through uh what you do in each individual case requires a lot of work. And when there's a legislature with six thousand petitions in front of it, um requires a lot of work, and it doesn't surprise me at all that we have to sometimes revisit these these petitions because they don't immediately get adopted. That being said, um I'm not prepared to vote um tonight, excuse me, um on which ones to go ahead and resubmit only because I think, you know, Representative Vitolo has given us some things to think about. And I think we we will do and should do some sorting out. You you know, maybe there's one in there that doesn't need to be refiled. Maybe there's two. Um I'm not sure that I'm ready tonight on the basis of what we've heard so far to decide which one might not be ready to, might not be necessarily refiled, which two might not be necessarily refiled. For certain, I think we're going to need to discuss um what to do about the ones that have to be resubmitted to town meeting. Um uh part of the, part of the reason for my hesitation there is um if there has been action, and Representative Vitolo referred to at least one case in which there may have been action, if there's been action already taken on legislation that applies statewide that would make re- render superfluous um the refiling of one of our home rule petitions, I think we should give serious consideration to not asking that it be refiled. So I just want to make those things clear as to why I might not be ready to go ahead and vote on which ones to file or not file tonight.
Okay, um I think uh.
I can go first.
Okay.
And then I'm happy to go after that. Thank you.
And I'll get back to using your first names.
That's.
Oh, thanks.
That's, I always used to say, Mr. Sammon is my father. Uh so there is one that uh. Uh, so there is one that, uh, that, uh, it seems to me, uh, is a no-brainer in terms of, of, uh, of refiling. An act amending section five of chapter 270, um, to authorize delegation by general bylaw of all select board licensing authority. Uh, that's something that, uh, will help our workload very considerably even tonight. Uh, it would have helped. So, uh, that's one that I hope you will, uh, step back and say, okay, we can, we, we could.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I'm of two minds. So I'll give you the, the, the first mind and then the second mind. The first mind is at least one of these, I think, is pressing time-wise. Otherwise, I think sitting back and discussing it more and voting later, but to me, the hybrid town meeting is important. I think it is, however, wherever you fall on the, I want to be in person, I want to be at home. Especially, I'm going to speak personally, for somebody like me, in-person town meeting is going to be an extremely challenging thing to, to do, right? As a parent, as a single parent. Um, and I think that we have an obligation as, as, as the democrat, the democratizing body of Brookline to try to make town meeting as accessible as possible to the 200-plus people who have to be there. And hybrid means people who really want to be there can be there. And people who have to be home feeding their children while they're listening to discussions can do that also. So I really, really hope we can agree to push that one forward. Um, the, the rest, this is where my second mind is, and I think you are all going to be surprised, but maybe not. I don't know.
You never cease to surprise.
Thank you, Bernard. That is a compliment. It's all voted on by, by town meeting. Who might have say that they don't go forward? So at some point I would be comfortable putting all of them forward because they were voted on by a majority of town meeting, whether I agree with them or not. So that's where I fall on that. But, but my personal request is the hybrid town meeting ones because, and I would like to vote on that tonight if we can, because to me, that has a real-time implication.
Yeah.
And a real equity and accessibility implication, both personally and to many, many other town meeting members.
No, I think that's important and, and the, uh, exemption from the in-person quorum.
Yes, that I.
Those are, those are.
Go hand in hand. Yes.
Uh, because if you end up, you, if you end up with a town meeting, doesn't have a quorum in the room.
Yep.
You don't have a town meeting.
Thank you for that. Yes, absolutely. A hundred percent.
Yeah. So let me, let me just ask, does anyone object to those two being voted tonight?
John, do you? I'm not sure I do, but I was, I was going to ask for more information.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you've, you've heard what was just said. Um, i- is this, are the objectives that were stated, um, more likely to be, um, achieved through legislation that applies across the board to cities and towns in Massachusetts? Or more likely to be approved on a home rule petition by home rule petition basis? In general, general legislation is more likely to pass than home rule legislation on a substantially similar topic. Uh, but, uh, there's no, uh, there's no guarantee in, in what the legislature does on a particular day. Uh, but I would also add that, uh, where we are in the two-year cycle is particularly relevant. Uh, it's not clear to me that it would matter if you voted it tonight or a week from now because all 6,000 bills are sitting at the House Clerk and the Senate Clerk's office where they are reading them one at a time and assigning them to committees. And until a bill, home rule or otherwise, is assigned to a committee, uh, there isn't much to be done. And so it's perfectly fine to vote tonight. It's perfectly fine to vote a week from now. We're at a particular time where particularly home rule legislation that, uh, isn't perfunctory, like a sick leave bank, uh, faces a particularly difficult time moving through the legislature because of where we are in the two-year cycle. That doesn't mean we won't push, uh, but I want to set clear expectations around that.
Thank you. Uh, with regard to the hybrid meetings and, and, uh, uh, waiving the quorum requirement, uh, in the room. Uh, is there any statewide legislation that you're aware of being proposed?
There is.
And where does that sit in, uh, in the process?
Well, in the same place.
Waiting for the, uh, waiting to be.
On the other hand, um, those bills have more champions to them because they impact more communities.
Right.
And to that end, uh, it is more likely that advocates for general legislation in something that's timely like this is are to pick up the attention than for a single community. That doesn't mean we can't try to do both.
Right.
Uh, it's not one or the other, but I, you know, I would be, I would, if I had to guess, I would say if we get anything, it's more likely that we get statewide legislation.
Right.
Then we get whatever's in our particular home rule.
But does, if we file these as home rule petitions, presumably it doesn't undermine the state, the.
That's right. That's right. I just, again, it's, I want to set expectations about if anything is likely to happen, happen unclear. And if something does, in this particular case, because this does impact multiple communities in identical ways, which makes it not an especially typical use of a home rule legislation to be, to be kind. Uh, it's much more likely that, uh, that the statewide legislation matters. And it is not the case that filing the home rule sends a message to the legislature about what Brookline wants. That's what I do when I talk to my colleagues and the way to do it is through conversations, not bills that we don't really want to pass.
Well, we wanted to.
For sure, in this, no, no, for sure, in this particular case, but in general, we've heard that argument. We've heard it spoken at town meeting, and I want to reiterate that it's wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, Jess.
Okay. Um, thank you.
How, do you know, off the top of your head, how, how many different bills are currently out there that, that purport to try and do this on a statewide basis? How many different, uh, versions of, of, of a long-term solution to this problem are out there currently?
There are several. I doubt there's more than a half a dozen. Uh, some only relate to representative town meetings, some only relate to open town meeting, right? Not, not every backscratcher is, is aiming for exactly the same itch. Uh, but, but they'll all be sort of considered together. Uh, if something's going to happen by the March 30th, if I've got that right deadline.
Might it be a more effective use of the select board's resources to send you a letter to send on to your colleagues expressing the, the view of Brookline, uh, that, for example, uh, a blanket extension of the current emergency status while, while the legislature works out what version of this it wants to pass on a permanent basis? Uh, and then it may be expressing support for one of those, or one or more of those proposals. Does that do you more good?
I don't think so for a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, the law relates to the COVID emergency, not to the conveniences or other needs of town meeting members and other board members. And so while those restrictions needs are valid, they're not related to the temporary law that was passed. So it's a worthy, it's a worthwhile policy discussion. Uh, but I don't think folks would consider it urgent merely because the COVID emergency has ended. Uh, and, and furthermore, again, um, I don't need to go to my colleagues with a letter from my community asserting that what I'm saying is true. They believe me. Uh, so, so I think if this board wants to push forward on those two issues, uh, and I say if because it's your decision, uh, you can call me privately if you want to know my opinion. Um, then you should, then you should vote it. And you should do it.
Miriam.
So I, I'm sure you didn't mean to imply that this was about convenience, Tommy, but to me, this is about accessibility and equity. So, uh, it's not that it's convenient for me to stay home and take care of my children. It's, it's essential. And I think if we want other voices in our town politics, then this is something we have, we need, this is a both and, right? We need to do both of these things. We need to express our support for what's happening at the State House. We need to advance our home rule petitions. Frankly, I'm also for sending a letter. The more we can impress upon these individuals and bodies of government that this is an important equity and accessibility issue in getting people to the table who, who otherwise would have a really hard time getting to the table. I think we need to do it. I feel really strongly about it. So I hope that you all will consider voting on those two tonight.
Okay. I think it, there's not that many. It might make sense to tick through them quickly. Uh, I don't think you will want to send all of them because, uh, state law has made some of them no longer functional. And so I think it's worth at least being aware of that, uh, so that, that you do use your, uh, use your, uh, right and responsibility of serving as that filter.
So, um, there are five of these, right?
There are more than five.
Well, five that, um.
Oh, yeah.
Categories.
So bad.
No, no, there are five.
Yeah, there's four of them.
We've discussed three.
In addition to the three that we've already done. That's right.
Yeah.
Um, but so, so just to tick through them.
Let's go through them.
Yeah. So, uh, just to point you.
Local voting rights for permanent legal residents residing in Brookline.
Yep. There's been no change in state law or policy that suggests that the world is any different than it was two years ago.
This, and this, uh, got, uh, this went over like a lead balloon at the legislature. I think it's fair to say, reading what happened to it.
Well, we, um, we pushed it along as, as long as we could, but we didn't get it over the finish line.
Right. Okay. That's a lead balloon. Uh.
You know what I'd like to do is, is to see if there's any objection to the two that, uh, Miriam.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Um, and, and get that out of the way. I mean, uh, John, do you?
No, I have no objection.
Okay. And, um, uh, there's no real downside. I don't think we should send a letter.
That's fine.
Things like that.
I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Not the hell I'm willing to die on.
So, uh, why don't we vote on that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
So I, uh, move, uh, you know, favorable action on, on sending, uh, H4450, an act authorizing the town of Brookline to hold hybrid town meetings and S3145, an act exempting the town of Brookline from in-person quorums off to the legislature through our representative, uh, Tommy Vitolo. All in favor, uh, Miriam?
Aye.
And John?
Oh, we're taking things in different order all of a sudden.
Too many words, you know, mystery. That's like two extra syllables, right? And your name, it's four extra syllables.
I just spell that again.
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we got two of those out of the way. Um.
All right. How about the, uh, the, um, licensing authority? Cause that's a, as I say, that's a no-brainer.
Well, uh, what do you think? Uh, and I, I know that sometimes.
Again, I like to, to. That bill was live until the very last, uh, day of the session, January 3rd, I think it was. And, um, there was some concern over a small bit of language. I've already begun the process of working with, uh, Chair Taki Chan, who is again, the Chair on Professional Licensure, uh, to see if we can't, uh, resolve that problem and move it forward. Uh, it's exactly the kind of language that makes for a good home rule. Uh, and I'm optimistic that we'll get another bite of the apple on that one.
And this is one that simply requires select board to resubmit.
Correct.
Does not need to go back to town meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, I move approval for submitting to our state representative, S3146 and the act amending section five of chapter 270 of the acts of 1985 as amended to authorize delegation by general bylaw of all select board licensing authority. All in favor, uh, Miriam?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
I think it's where his eye goes, John.
You've, you've departed from seniority and, uh, taking the vote.
Oh, I did?
Yeah. Unless.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were.
God, I didn't know that. Sorry.
That's okay.
It's seniority. That's why Heather always asks you to.
Yeah, well, I know I'm senior, right? In many ways.
Just think to yourself, who's old on this part?
That don't run that.
Okay. Okay. So we have two more. Um, what, what do people think about, uh, an act authorizing local voting rights for permanent legal residents residing in Brookline? Uh, do we want, want to send that on? And then the, uh, act authorizing expenditure of $500,000?
That's one I want to discuss.
Okay, let's.
Okay, go ahead.
But, uh, well, first of all, on the first one, do, do we want to send that on? I mean, I, I think the.
I would send them all on, so.
But, but that's to go back to town meeting.
No. No.
No, no, that's.
Okay.
All of these are, all of these.
That's one of the still.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's in our court. Um, honestly, I think, um, the chance of getting local voting rights for permanent legal residents residing in Brookline, presumably only in, in local elections is the only place where.
Yeah.
Correct.
Can do it. Uh, I, I, I don't see that as making it. And so I, I wonder whether we're just wasting, we're wasting our legislators' time.
Well, why, why don't we put that off for, for another day? I mean, I agree with you. I mean, the chances of that passing, even though it's a great idea, is probably remote, but we may want to listen to what the community says.
Hmm, great. I agree.
Okay. So let, let's put that off. And then, um, did, Miriam, did you have some, oh, no.
No, I'm.
Tommy, you have.
So regarding the stabilization fund, as I outlined in my letter, there are two really important factors that might, uh, result in this body pausing on sending this one forward. The first is that last session, we passed a law that my interpretation and the House Chair on Cannabis's interpretation is that what we want to do is now legal and we don't need to pass a home rule to do something that's already legal. Uh, we've obviated the need for it. Now, uh, I'm not a lawyer. I'm certainly not a cannabis lawyer and I'm certainly not town council. So I would encourage this body to check in with town council on this one in particular. I would also add that there is a case before the SJC on this very topic as well. And so I don't know how long that is going to take. My understanding is SJC cases are faster than many others. Um, and so it might make sense to pause until, uh, that outcome is known as well. Uh, th- this is an example where, uh, frankly, the, the law in Massachusetts is quite different than it was when this home rule was passed. And it may not make sense to ask for exactly this again.
Okay. As a practical matter too, you, you have already done this, right? You've already made this expenditure and this, this was Pat, this.
Wondering about that.
Yeah. This, the reason why this home rule petition was sent out was effectively to cover your bases. So that if someone were to put up their hand and say, hey, I don't think that's a legal expenditure, you had something in the legislature that expressly said that is legal. Um, but per Representative Vitolo's comment, right? The law has now outstripped that and per his letter, right? What we can do obviously is we can have town council either expressly get guidance from Cannabis Control Commission or review their current decisions, excuse me, review their current decisions on the subject.
Okay.
Um, but.
Yeah, let's do, down one touch.
Yeah.
Let's hang on.
Hold off on that.
Yeah.
So we got, yeah.
And the last one I'd like to flag, uh, it's a little bit higher on the table. Uh, it's warrant article 31 from May 2021. This is the speed limit one. The home rule did not pass.
Okay.
The town could absolutely submit it again and I would file it again. But because I was able to amend general law to do close to what we wanted, it was as much as Governor Baker would let me have. Uh, and, and all other 350 cities and towns get to do it too. There's now a process by which the town can submit, uh, to Mass DOT to change those speed limits. That process did not exist when this home rule was passed the first time, but that process exists now. And it might make sense for our town to work that process before we ask the state to change the law for Brookline.
Okay. And that, but that was on the successful home rule petitions.
Oh, thank you. I'm like, I don't see it here.
Yeah. So, but because it didn't pass.
Yeah.
And it passed for the first time, uh, last session. Uh, you could submit the letter. Uh, I just don't know that it would be, uh.
Doesn't sound like it's.
Yeah.
Getting at what you're interested in.
Unless anyone wants to do that, um, no, I'd say we just leave that.
But I am hopeful that, that our, uh, DPW, uh, minus the Transportation Administrator for now will pursue the Mass DOT process to reduce those speed limits from 30, 35, and sometimes 40 down to a much safer 25 in thickly settled areas.
Good. Okay. Now, the final category is expired home rule petitions. For these, we have to get, uh, town meeting approval again. So, uh, what, what does the board want to do about that?
Is there, are we doing?
Well, we, we can, we can.
You could wait for someone else to submit a warrant article. Um, or we could submit a warrant article. Those are the two choices. The normal, so, um, a betterment loan, loan program for the funding of electrification initiatives is something one would expect. ZAB would come to us and say, we'd like to submit this.
Uh, um, sorry, Select Board Member Sandman, go to the very last page. The three are November 19, warrant article nine, November 19, warrant article one, and November 19, warrant article eight.
Yep.
On the table. Those are the three. On the table, those are the three.
Age sixty-seven in your bracket.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong.
Yeah.
Action here. I beg your pardon.
Real estate transfer fee.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Ah, the real, so the real estate transfer fee, where does that sit with, again, statewide action?
Yeah, so there is a statewide bill. It is not identical to the town bill. The knobs are set in different places about.
Yeah.
Uh, what the thresholds are and what the exemptions are. And of course, uh, you know, the cost of housing isn't the same as it was four years ago. And so uh, you know, uh, maybe town meeting wants a chance at tuning those knobs a little differently. Uh, maybe town meeting wants to just say, hey, you support the statewide bill, we'd be perfectly happy with a statewide bill passing, and we don't need a home rule. Um, certainly, your body can't act without town meeting. It's perfectly reasonable to ask town meeting. The issue certainly hasn't gone away.
So the the rational thing to do here might be to submit a resolution. Warren article to town meeting saying that it's the census town meeting to support statewide legislation.
If town meeting liked the statewide language.
Yeah.
Sure. If town we meeting thinks that Brookline real estate is substantially different. And needs different exceptions, exemptions, thresholds, then it might say, we know better than the state legislature, and this is what we want.
I can't imagine that town meeting would ever do anything of that, so.
Yeah, not our town meeting.
But I think it's probably worthwhile trying to give them some guidance by submitting a resolution. So we'll, perhaps we can think about that.
The the second one, um, I would remind you that town meeting passed this idea, and I dutifully submitted it. Since then, town meeting filed it again, and it failed.
Yeah.
So the most recent will of town meeting is not to authorize citizens sixteen years or older to register and vote in local elections. Maybe town meeting has changed its mind again since then. Uh, that's that's for those two hundred and sixty-three people to decide for themselves. But uh, nothing has changed at the state level, um, which is to say, similar to documented immigrants voting in local elections. There does not appear to be an awful lot of appetite.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, just to to point out a couple of things, uh, I I I'm glad we just now acknowledged. That uh town meeting's mind has changed on this question of uh, you know, the sixteen-year-olds voting. Um, and that's a perfect example of how it shouldn't be assumed automatically that something that town meeting. You know, two sessions ago or three sessions ago, um, requested of the legislature should automatically be resubmitted. Cause you might find out that actually thinking at at town meeting has changed on some of these questions. And so I think um a- as a starting point, um, i- it we we ought to consider the possibility. That town meeting may view some of these differently and give them a chance to say so. Um, and uh also um circumstances change. And with with that in mind, uh, I'm thinking about this H four, five, six, seven. Um, the act authorizing the town of Brookline to impose a real estate transfer fee. In the interim, since that was first uh sent to the legislature as a home rule petition. Uh, we have adopted in Brookline the Community Preservation Act. And we adopted it, and we are now benefiting from it at the level of one percent. Um, as the additional uh tax, the bump up, you know, that we're able to to collect. Um, in uh, you know, and and from the local tax levy, from the annual tax levy. And and it goes into the Community Preservation Preservation Act Fund, excuse me, um, which is dedicated, among other things, to housing. So we actually have a different vehicle for um funneling some money into the very worthy goal. Of um subsidizing housing in Brookline. Um, and we might want to consider that before we resubmit. The real estate transfer fee um again. Uh, and so I'm just, I'm just pointing out circumstances change and minds change. And, you know, before we automatically send something back, perhaps it should go past town meeting. In some cases necessarily has to go past town meeting, in other cases, maybe we should check in with town meeting.
Yes.
So I think.
But but by the way, all these have to.
Yeah, that's.
Town meeting.
Yeah. No, but that's what I, this has to go back to town meeting regardless.
But with a recommendation to adopt as before, or maybe we'll change what we, you know, in fact, I don't think this originated with us. Um, in in the case.
No, this 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 didn't, uh, this particular warrant article didn't. But um, at least this particular select board member is very much in favor of a real estate transfer fee. Um, so what, I guess what I would advocate for us to do is to look at what's being proposed statewide. See how it aligns with what we propose in the warrant article, and I would be very happy if this select board then proposed. A real estate transfer tax fee.
So uh, just a question of timing.
Um, the warrant is about to close.
The warrant is about to close, but we have the ability to submit a special with within the uh uh within the town meeting.
Right.
You also have the ability to reopen and close the warrant.
And we can can do that for this particular thing.
Yeah.
So uh, so uh, I I am, I agree with uh Miriam that I would like to see a real estate transfer fee. Um, in spite of the fact that I think I may be paying one soon. Um, if it passed, but um, the uh. Uh, the question of that that was in my mind is, okay, when do we need to actually do something with this? Um, if we have a little bit of time, let's not let it drop. I think the important thing is to look at the legislation. And see whether uh, as Representative Vitolo suggests, you know, is okay with us. Uh, I understand what you mean by setting the knobs differently and the different uh thresholds and so forth. Uh, and see if that's okay, uh, if it's close enough to what was uh asked before. Um, and then I do think the sensible thing to do would be a resolution supporting, assuming that that the state legislation is not too far off. Uh, a resolution supporting state resolution, the state legislation.
Agreed.
Okay.
All right.
Well, are you, are you saying you would vote for such resubmit- submittal or not? Cause I would not.
I think I think the question is, or what is being proposed is that we look into.
Yeah, I'm not too.
We vote to them.
And determine whether it makes sense to resubmit that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we need to really understand this a little more than.
Yeah.
At least I do.
Yeah. Uh, you could help us out a bit by um give, if you have a synopsis of the um, of the state legislation? Where the, as you say, where the knobs are.
I would be happy to provide you with the language of the legislation, and I will allow you all to determine exactly. What are the implications of each? I suspect the four of you might come up with four different highlights and conclusions, and I'm not inclined to step between you.
And then we can find, look for the opinion of town council and and accept or reject that.
You have five, okay. All right, well, it seems to me like a number is a number, but sometimes a number isn't, okay.
That's right.
Okay, good. Okay, um, doesn't look like there's anything else for us to.
The, there's one more, the authorization for senior discount program.
Oh, I'm sorry, last stage, right?
Similar thing.
So.
Town meeting's approval again.
Yeah, this, what what happened here? What, why did that not? Yeah, I mean, this is very popular.
Yeah, you know, Brookline passed more home rules this last session than almost every other community in the Commonwealth, but we didn't get all of them.
Okay. Is there, would there be any objection on the board to uh?
What what I would point out um is that since this passed town meeting. Uh, the legislature did pass a senior property tax reduction for low-income seniors. And so the total amount that seniors uh are on the hook for with respect to town government has been reduced since this passed. Now, it's a different bill, it has different implications. Uh, I don't mean to suggest that one obviates the other. Uh, but clearly, uh, the future is different for low-income seniors than it was when this passed.
Except water and sewer and and property tax, they're really are two different costs.
They come out of the same checking account.
By understanding that the DBW initiated this last time and with the new, with the new environment uh in terms of the overall revenue there. Maybe it makes sense to refer this one to to Water and Sewer, to the Water and Sewer Commissioner. And uh.
You want, want it in file.
Yeah, they can, the team can come back, the DPW team can come back before you and make a recommendation.
We're punting to them and and that.
Yeah, let's let.
Let them.
I think staff would be happy to kind of look at the changed environment and see if this is still.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Very helpful. Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Your expertise is greatly appreciated and greatly admired.
I'm gonna go home and eat some eggplant parmesan. Have a good night.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Next, uh, we have uh change of DBA, um, application of uh Bright Life View LLC. Doing business as MiGaku um to Bright Life View LLC being, doing business as Sapporo Ramen. Yes.
Hello, yes.
Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the.
Yes. My name is uh Taiji Mineo, and uh I'm the owner of uh uh MiGaku. And uh also uh Sapporo Ramen uh in Cambridge. And um, also, first of all, uh, the address on the uh agenda. It says uh, I think it says twelve eighty-nine.
Twelve ninety-eight.
Twelve ninety-eight.
Twelve ninety-beacon street, right?
Correct.
That's not correct. It's uh two thirty-eight Washington Street.
Oh, wow.
Hmm, it's a big difference.
Yeah.
Down the street, yeah.
Um.
More than a typo.
I assume your application includes the correct address.
Uh, yes, uh-huh, yeah. And um.
Could you, could you tell me the the address again, twelve ninety?
I have it.
Two thirty-eight Washington.
Yep.
Okay.
And uh.
Yeah, no.
Right, yep. Just like.
So um.
Three minutes.
Okay, so so your application has the right address, it's just our agenda, it says the wrong address.
Right.
Okay, sorry. So that should not make a difference about anything, or anything.
And so I just wanted to say uh thank you to Brookline uh for the uh small business grant. That we received during the uh state of emergency, COVID, was a really tremendous help. So I just wanna.
Great, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear from someone that 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 has been helpful because.
Yep.
You know, we know that generally those are important grants uh for small businesses, but to hear that it made it, made an impact.
Oh, definitely, yeah, in every way, yeah.
Good. Any, any questions or comments from the select board?
Nope.
So, okay, um, then I move, and this is not a hearing. So I move approval uh of the application for a change in DBA. Uh, for Bright Life View at two thirty-eight Washington. From uh DBA of MiGaku to a DBA of Sapporo Ramen. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Um, Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next, uh, item number ten, new common victor license. Question of approving the application of a common victor for BE Food Corp doing business as BE Pasta Bar. At ten twenty-six Commonwealth Avenue with hours of operation Monday through Sunday, ten AM to eleven PM. And seating consisting of thirty indoor seats. Also, question of approving the application of a new entertainment be uh license for BE Food Corp. Uh, again, uh, doing business as Pasta Bar at ten twenty-six Commonwealth Avenue. And uh, they say that the entertainment will consist of radio and television Mondays through Sunday, ten AM to eleven PM. Are there anyone here to uh speak to this?
Mr. Axiotis is coming up.
Okay.
Would just prompt him to introduce himself.
Pardon me?
I would just prompt him to introduce himself.
Okay, you will do it or?
No, you.
Okay, I'll do it. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, uh, this is Eva Axiotis. Um, I'm here with my husband Billy Axiotis. I think we joined as a panelist instead of an attendee. Our mistake, okay.
Well, you're on our screen, so.
Hi, good evening.
So uh introduce yourself and and uh um about uh the the restaurant and and um whatever else you want to say.
Good evening, uh, my name is Billy Axiotis. This is my wife, Eva. Um, we are, we want to start a new business in Brookline. A uh quick casual, uh fast casual pasta shop on uh Palm Ave and um.
Yeah, we're just here before you today for your approval to continue with the process.
Right.
Can we check their address too? Cause.
Yeah. It's vacant, it's vacant.
Cause it's coming up as Boston.
Well.
Are you in Boston or in Brookline?
Um.
Part, you may be partly in Boston.
Yeah, it's, uh, we were told that we should use the mailing address as Boston, but the business is Brookline. So it's the door kind of, it's strange, the door, they, we were told, kind of separates the line between Brookline and Boston.
That happens a lot.
Yeah, you're on the, you're on the Brookline side of Com Ave.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, any questions from the board? And my understanding is there are no residential properties around that, or am I incorrect? I mean, uh.
Oh, it's Packard's.
Not familiar, are you familiar?
Okay.
Know where Packard's Corner is?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like all.
Okay, good. And you're, the uh reason why I ask is that sometimes entertainment licenses uh. Uh, cause uh abutting neighbors to object, but you, that's not a problem here, and you're only asking for a radio and television anyway, so.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions uh from the select board?
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, I see no reason why I shouldn't uh move approval of the application of a common victor. For BE Food Corp doing business as BE Pasta Bar at ten twenty-six Commonwealth Avenue. Um, all in favor of that question? Um, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And second, um, move approval of the application of a new entertainment. License for BE Food Corp doing business as BE Pasta Bar. Uh, same address, entertainment will consist of radio and television Monday through Sunday, ten AM to eleven PM. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Welcome to Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Okay, next item is a public hearing. Scheduled for seven PM. Uh, we apologize for uh the wait, but you know. That's life in the big city.
It's only life here.
Big town, yes. Um, okay, this is an all alcohol common victor, an entertainment license. Um, for uh, um, Boston Viachio LLC doing business as Bar Vlahas. Have I pronounced that right?
Good job.
Okay, uh, tell us about what you, your 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 business and what you want to do.
All right, well, good evening. Attorney Trish Fonsworth, and with me is Dimitri Solakis. And um Dimitri will tell you all about the concept and the the new restaurant, but just by way of background. Dimitri owns and operates already existing uh Greek-themed restaurants, uh Crossi and uh in um. The Back Bay of Boston, and also Greco. He has four of those spots, that's more of a fast casual. Um, restaurant has, you know, liquor licenses um already, so is experienced with that. And uh, so we're seeking, that is part of the CV alcohol and uh liquor license, so. I'll turn it to Dimitri, and he can tell you about.
And and by the way, we we have, my notes say we have ten likes, licenses available, and they're gonna take one, is that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so we'll have nine left.
This is my neighborhood.
Excited to be hopefully coming over to um sixteen fifty-three Beacon Street in Washington Square. So Bar Vlahas is gonna be a traditional, authentic uh Greek restaurant, the only one in Brookline, the first one. Um, so we're focusing on a specific region of Greece and a specific nomadic group of Greece known as the Vlax. Um, and it's the only Vlah concept in the whole US. Um, so it's getting a little, shed a little light onto Brookline. And we're just happy to be another diverse ethnic restaurant like Mahonyam and, you know, all the other restaurants that have opened up recently. And add a little, you know, Greeks to to Brookline. Um, we're looking for about seventy-two seats inside right now. Um, dining room on one floor only. It was, used to be a pizza place, and then it was converted into. Mass Mitchell bought an office space and did a lot of work to it, and then never really did anything with it. So we saw it as an opportunity to really do a really nice restaurant there. Um, just during construction, just seeing everybody coming by and peeking their heads in, we're already in love with the area and the community there. And we're really excited to bring a Greek restaurant to to Washington Square in Brookline.
Now, we used to have a Greek restaurant on Harvard and Alton Place, a small Greek restaurant.
Little, it was more takeout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was good, though. How does Vlak, as you pronounce it, differ from what we consider Greek restaurant food?
It's funny because what we're really, in Christine Back Bay, we focus on regional Greek. So we do Greek food from all throughout the country. Vlax are central Greece, so you're not going to find octopus here, you know? And people think Greek food is just grilled octopus. These are freshwater fish, you know, there, there were shepherds who were traveling from village to village, and the original Greek cuisine hospitality started from these, this, this group in Greece and these regions. So we're just going to introduce the original authentic handmade pies. There's a style of cooking called Gastra where they take clay pots and they braise on that. Be tons of vegan options, vegetarian options, seafood meat, but the seafood component is only freshwater fish, rather than what people know as the whole fish in Greece.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, Miriam.
So, so first, I am very excited. I walk by all the time, it looks like, like it's going to be beautiful. I think even stuck my head in once, the door was open and the weather was nice. Used to be an S and S diner, do you guys remember S and S diner?
Sure.
Yeah, and then it was Starbucks, and then it was this financial adults learning how to do finances place, and now it's hopefully going to be successful Greek restaurant.
We're here to stay, we have a good contract with Greek restaurants in Boston, and we're excited to come to Brookline, too. I, I find myself visiting Brookline a lot. I live in Back Bay, I just drive it over, and I love the restaurants here.
It's a, it's a great location, it's a great neighborhood.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
A lot of good, and it's good to see that reviving.
Yes, yes, yeah, it's right near Marmalade and.
Yeah.
Yes.
By the way, it's great pastrami.
Yes, that's our lunch pretty much every day.
Any other questions? Tell, tell me, tell me, I'm just curious, what, what, what type of freshwater fish are you talking about? And how do they differ from other fish, freshwater fish in that area?
And how do they swim here from Greece?
So trout is a freshwater fish that we eat throughout Greece that, you know, on my recent research trip, we were there in the mountains and these lakes of Greece, and we just saw a whole different side of Greece. And I felt like I was rediscovering Greece. And, you know, they're, they have freshwater bass, they have perch, pike, a lot of fishes that we don't eat or are, people don't really know. So we want to introduce that, and a lot of the styles of cooking is not just grilled fish. These, this group of people were braising with tomatoes and olives and prunes and, and, you know, the stuff in Greece that most Greeks don't even know we eat, you know? So the dishes will be really, really authentic before the Ottoman Empire took over. And now the foods of Zaziki, Musaka, that's the stuff we all know. But before that, this is the original food of the Greek people.
So.
A little educational piece too that we're going to, we're going to put in there, too.
So no sturgeon?
No.
I mean, that's indigenous to that area, is what I understand.
Freshwater Greece was more, it's a, they have trout farm, eel, they eat a lot of eel frog legs. We're not going to have frog legs, but in Greece, that part of Greece, maybe it's a special snails, like you, you don't associate that with Greek cuisine. We're going to have the Zaziki, we're going to have the, the, the stuff that people know, but also beyond that, the original authentic Greek food, before it became my Big Fat Greek Wedding Style.
Okay, this is.
When are you opening? Wait.
Well, this license will help us, you know, get to that opening day. We're set to start training soon with our staff. We have, bringing about 30 new staff into Brookline and hopefully open in March.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, and I'd like to open it to the public for any questions or further comments or questions about the cuisine.
At this time, there are 13 virtual attendees and none in person. No one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, leave it open for a couple of seconds. Any comments from the select or questions from the select board? Any more questions? Okay, no questions, Devin from the audience? None, okay. Close the hearing, and I'd like to commence voting. First question of approving the application for, and for a new all alcohol license for Boston Black, Latch?
Vlaqui.
Vlaqui. LLC doing business as Bar Vlahas at 1653 Beacon Street, Brookline. And because it's a liquor license, they propose operating hours Monday through Sunday, 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. and propose alcoholic beverages service Monday through Sunday, 10 a.m. to 1 a.m. And last call midnight. So I move approval, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving the application of a common victor license for Boston Vlahas. Did I forget how to pronounce that so quickly?
The plural of Vlahas is Vlaquis.
Vlaqui, okay, Vlahas and Vlaqui, okay. Et cetera. Common victory license for, for the restaurant with a proposed seating of 78 interior seats and 20 private patio seats in the back, right?
The patio's up front.
Up front, okay. And actually, that raises a question, I think, has to be asked, and that is, could you tell me about the trash disposal process that you use? Both in terms of, you know, the trash in back, I assume, but also control of the patio area? Because that has been a, a problem here in Brookline, attracting rodents.
Yeah, no problem. So we, we actually signed with the same company who, who services Marmalade next door and Golden Temple to the left. So it's only going to be one pickup, it's Cleanway, and it's going to be seven days. And then with the patio, it's not on public sidewalk, there's a ramp that goes into the, into the main entrance, a handicap ramp. There's a space in front of that that will allow for, we're only, you know, putting 20 seats as, as we applied for. With nightly cleaning, you know, we have good track records at all our other locations as well with cleanliness and, you know, cleaning and being responsible.
We're, we're going to watch, make sure.
Please do.
Make sure that you.
No problem.
You know, get rid of all the trash and garbage. Good, so check out, check them out, okay?
We have some eyes.
Okay, so I move approval of the common victor license for Boston Vlahas doing business as Bar Vlahas at 1653 Beacon Street. On favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving.
Yeah, because we, we missed the manager section up here. Can you just, can you read this alternate language?
Manager section.
For the all alcohol license, there was a line about the proposed managers.
Okay, yeah.
Can we combine those, move the application of the manager and an alternate manager?
Okay, I move approval of proposed manager Dimitri Slakas for Boston Vlahas doing business as Bar Vlahas at 1653 Beacon Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. All in favor of this manager approval? John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Sorry about that. Next, question of approving the application of an alternate manager, Natasha Prashinsky for Boston's Vlahas LLC doing business as Bar Vlahas at 1653 Beacon Street. On favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Finally, question of approving the application for an entertainment license for Boston Vlahas LLC doing business as Bar Vlahas at 1653 Beacon Street. Entertainment consists of recorded music and instrumental Greek music only for special events, Monday through Friday, 4 p.m. to 10 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. And I believe that there are no budding residential properties, so that, that should not be an issue. So all in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Look forward to your opening. Okay. Boards and commissions appointments. Let's see, look through my notes here. We have two appoint, we have two appointments. First Housing Advisory Board, Rita McNally. Any questions about appointing her to the Housing Advisory Board?
No, it's a repeat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I only have one question.
Okay.
Which is, because there's potential that we're going to be going to in person, that anybody who's getting put, you know, back on a board should understand that going forward, at least for right now, there's going to be a chance they'll have to physically come in. And I, and I think this applies to Rita, because I know she calls in to town meeting.
Yeah.
You can still call in.
As long as there's a quorum.
This is a quorum press.
But like the, so for CDICR, one of the things we're talking about is a rotating schedule of who's required to be in. So, you know, so that, that the quorum doesn't consistently fall on the same people all the time to be physically present.
Yeah.
I don't know how each committee or commission is going to handle it. But I just think anybody that we're appointing right now, we should do our due diligence to make sure they understand that this is something that might be that, something they have to deal with.
Okay, I think Rita's willing to deal with, you know, with the new situation.
Again, for town meeting, she doesn't, she, she calls in on her call.
Yeah, that's more comfort of technology than mobility.
Right, but if, even if she's joining remotely.
Yeah, well, since the phone works.
Yes.
We used to use the phone for calling in.
No, why? I don't remember the dial up, I'm, I am older than I look.
That's certainly true, but.
Right, I'm just.
Okay, let's move right along here.
Objection. I'm just saying it's something we should make my app her getting here.
Yeah, okay.
That's fair enough.
Yeah. Devin, is that something that your office should do? Just to alert people of the fact that we may be.
I have been.
Ending? You have been, okay, good.
Great.
Refresh your trainings coming up on how to do all the things in person.
Oh, with the gear, you mean? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All in favor of Rita McNally, Housing Advisory Board, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, Advisory Council on Public Health, Housing, okay, I have a typo on my notes here. So next is Advisory Council on Public Health, Natalia Olinas.
Natalia Olinos.
Natalia, okay, I pronounced it wrong. And Peter Moyer. Any discussion of those two?
Right, Peter and I used to work together in the same ER.
Okay, is it Peter Moyer?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and his son is a firefighter. And his brother was one of the firefighters in New York, who died in 11, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
He is a great guy.
Peter is a great guy.
I assume his father is too.
Oh, you're talking about junior. I was talking about senior.
Okay.
Senior is really one of the most wonderful positions I've ever had to work with.
Okay, so all in favor of those two appointments to the Advisory Council on Public Health? Michael?[1738.62]